Good evening and welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Here.
Rothman. De Placido.
Here.
Laney Martin. Brown.
Here.
Weinberg.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Depome.
Here.
Young Gertz.
Here.
Spiegelman.
Here.
Bowles. Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Veighy.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin with public comment on agenda items this evening, I have one announcement. The Board of Commissioners held an executive session on the evening of October twenty-ninth to discuss a personnel matter. And with that, I will open it up for comments on the agenda items that are before the board for a vote this evening. Please come forward. You have three minutes. Please state your name.
Okay. Adele Cubell, and I'm from Abington. The minutes secretary again refused to write the reason I brought in a petition. When you record in the minutes that a petition was submitted, it says nothing. Nothing. You have to write what the petition is for. The minutes secretary must record that the petition stated, "Abington Township Manager Richard Manfredi has prioritized apartment complexes for eight years. Mr. Manfredi is inaccessible to citizens. It would be detrimental to Abington if Mr. Manfredi continues in any position after retirement." For accuracy and for truthfulness of any type, that must be written, and it needs to be corrected. Baseless vicious attacks against citizens happen here, and they're meant to intimidate. Staged attacks distract from the greed of the administration and commissioners. In sight, divide, silence is the goal. Examples from past meetings, Mr. Hecker accused the children of World War II veterans of homophobia. This included a citizen that shared his father was shot three times in D-Day. All commissioners refuse to honor a ninety-nine-year-old World War II veteran that fought at the D-Day battle. Other townships organized inspiring celebrations to honor their World War II veterans, not Abington. Mr. Hecker claimed he received email that was threatening toward the queer community.
Ms. Cubell, I'm confused. What agenda item are you speaking to?
Let me finish.
No, I'm asking a question.
I have three minutes, and I'm going to tell you about base-
At this-
Baseless-
At this section of the meeting, the public comment is about-
That's right.
-what we are voting on this evening.
No, you're silencing me so that truth can't be told.
No, you're gonna follow the rules.
I am talking about the minutes and what they don't say.
Well, that's not what you're talking about now.
Yes. You don't want me to speak about baseless vicious attacks that occur here.
That's not related to the minutes.
That is what it is. Yes. Let me speak.
Ms. Cubell, if you have a comment about what is on the agenda this evening-
Family received email that were threatening toward the queer community. Yet, Mr. Hecker never reported any of this to the police. Mr. Hecker, why would you fail to report vicious email to the police? Mr. Hecker, I am certain you never received any threatening emails. Mr. Hecker insults and attacks citizens regularly here, and it's not recorded in the minutes. He bangs his gavel to have citizens removed from the room for daring to respond. Mr. Brown purchased a dog whistle with the intention of swinging it around during board meetings. Mr. Brown views himself as knowledgeable in encouraging constructive conversation. Speaking of the increase of desperate crime, which is what we have, gets the dog whistle. Peculiar behavior, to say the least. I went through all of the meetings for over a year, and the only vicious attack that you didn't respond to that was baseless was last October, and it was an anti-Semitic remark that was made right here.
Okay.
And nobody responded.
Ms. Cubell, your time has expired. Thank you.
Nothing was submitted.
Please take your seat.
Who wouldn't want to start their meeting that way right now?
Not allowing me to speak. You have much to hide.
You just spoke for over three minutes. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we will turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Commissioner Hecker and Commissioners all, there's hardly anybody in Abington that believes that we all should wait to the end of what can be a two- or three-hour meeting before being allowed to speak at all. It isn't going to hurt you to hear it in one place instead of another. Those rules are absurd, and also, the rule that you have that after you do the meeting, and we see things that are just mind-blowing, that shouldn't have happened, you actually have a rule that says, "We're not allowed to talk about agenda items at the after-the-meeting three minutes." So, you know, the rules that are designed to hurt, not to help residents should be changed. And it is the actions of yourselves on that dais that causes the behaviors that you see that make you look so bad. This is just something that you need to change. You need to treat residents with respect. It's amazing. We had to pay a consultant to write that all over the place, that you do treat residents with respect. But unfortunately, you do not. So, tonight, you're going to be approving a manager. We asked multiple times to be included in a process which allowed us to say what we were looking for in a manager. Everybody knows we've been unbelievably unhappy with this manager. And so, we're looking for a manager with a whole new approach, and especially a whole new approach to citizen interaction. And the fact that you did not include us, you also did not include the documents properly. Again, this manager did not post the documents according to our policy. And in addition, half the documents are not there. The contract that you are going to approve tonight when you approve this manager is not there for the public's view and for the public's input. And that's wrong. So, I'm asking you to take this item off the agenda to set a special meeting where this can properly be held and where public input can properly be had. This is not okay, and we shouldn't have to spend our time talking about the rules that you violate. It just shouldn't be. At the last meeting, Commissioner Hecker, you also violated speaking rules by telling the speaker what they were allowed to speak on. It's just absolute nonsense. So, in this particular case, the fact that there was no committee meeting and there was no other opportunity for people to speak means that the public has not had their proper rights and their proper speaking time. Astoundingly, you promised the public, when you made your last changes, that we would have expanded speaking rights. They've been nothing of the sort. So, our new manager that you're about to approve tonight has his resume at the last minute posted in the documents. And my concern is that he has been just a few years at this place and then a few years at that place, not unlike Mr. Manfredi himself. And surprisingly, they both have an association with Hilltown. It seems that perhaps he may have been a manager there when Mr. Manfredi-
All right, Ms. Cubell, I mean, Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
So, I would be very glad if, I assume that he's there tonight, and I'd be very glad if you would ask him if he has a previous association with Mr. Manfredi.
We're not gonna do a Q&amp;A this evening, but you will have the opportunity. Thank you for your comments. I don't see anybody else. So, with that, we will move to the consent agenda, and for that, I turn to Board Vice President Matt Veighy.
Thank you, Mr. President. A move for passage of the consent agenda. Let's set it as items A through G. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Brown, you mentioned you wanted to make a brief comment about one of the agenda items.
Yes, thank you. This comment is for agenda item BOC dash zero-three-one-one-one-four-two-four. With the installation of the experimental stop sign on Pine Avenue, eastbound and westbound at Maple Avenue, I have requested that a speed study be done prior to the install of the experimental stop sign, as well as a post-install speed study, so that we can get that data and identify how traffic patterns have changed, both pre and post-install of the sign. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda carries. We have no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business, and I will once again turn to Board Vice President Matt Veighy.
Thank you, President Hecker. First item is BOC dash zero-seven dash one-one-one-four-two-four. It's a motion to appoint Christopher Christman as the new Township Manager effective January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, and approve the related employment agreement. An ISO move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And before I open it up for any comments or questions, I just want to make a few comments of my own. First of all, I want to thank the board members that were able to participate in the recent interviews. I also want to acknowledge Commissioner Brown and Henry for joining Commissioner Veighy and Schreiber and myself to vet the initial round of candidates. Thank you for putting that time in. We really appreciate your energy and effort. So, this evening, we will be approving an agreement that is for one year in duration. And the reason it is for one year is because the first-class Township Code requires us to sync the manager agreement to the board reorganization meeting. And so, that will take place a year from now, and at that point, any employment contract would be for a duration of two years. And I will also announce that the starting base salary for this position is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And with that, I will open it up for any comments or questions for members of the board. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Christman, and if you'd like to come Welcome.
Thank you, President Hecker. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much to the board. I'll keep my comments very brief. I'll keep it even under three minutes, for sure. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Commissioners for the confidence that you're placing in me this evening with this appointment. I'm honored to be selected as your next Township Manager, and I'm looking forward to getting started in January. I do want to take a quick moment to thank my predecessor, Mr. Manfredi. I know he's not here tonight. You know, Rich's dedicated years of service to this community has not gone unnoticed. I do want to say that, you know, he's done a great job of creating the bedrock and the foundation of all the good things that are going on in Abington over the course of the last seven years. And as we move forward, he set the goal and the standard by which, you know, other managers who come after him will continue that process. So, I look forward to filling his shoes as we move forward and helping to advance your goals and objectives as we move forward in time. So, lastly, I just want to say I'm looking forward to joining this outstanding staff that we have here.
For sure.
I'm looking forward to meeting our community. I hear some in the background and online tonight, so I am looking forward to chatting with them more offline and once I get settled in. And I'm also looking forward to working with all of you directly, getting to know you and your wards, and what your goals and objectives are individually for the wards, as well as how that meshes with the larger community goals. Again, I'm just very excited to get started. I'm looking forward to continuing to make Abington Township a great place to live, work, and play, and I thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to getting started again. So, thank you.
Kristin.[857.61][857.61](APPLAUSE) On behalf of the board, we are delighted that you have chosen to join us. We look forward to the work ahead. We look forward to be guided by your expertise and experience with the opportunities and challenges that are before us as a community, and we look forward to that work together.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening as well.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Vice President Beighy.
All right. Thank you. Next item is BOC dash zero-eight dash one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to approve LD two-four oh-three by Lifecycle Abington at thirteen-twenty-nine Old York Road. It is a preliminary final major subdivision of land development plan and adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero-three-seven, and ISO move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC dash zero-nine dash one-one-four-two-four. Motion to approve change order request number one for Miko Construction, Inc. for the inclusive park and playground, and to supplementally appropriate nine thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars for the change order, and also to supplementally appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from available ARPA funds for the inclusive park and playground project. An ISO move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC dash one-zero dash one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to approve and appoint Milelo Consulting as the Township's information technology management services provider, and to approve IT managed services for twenty-four-seven monitoring and firewall upgrades for three years in the amount of eighty-three thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. An ISO move. Second.
Matter's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC dash one-one dash one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to enter into a three-year beneficiary agreement with Second Alarmers Association and Rescue Squad for the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funds, in the amount of six hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars over fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Again, are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC dash one-two dash one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero-three-eight for the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, allocation of majority of available funds to salary expenditures for January first, two thousand and twenty-five through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, utilizing standard allowance in the revenue replacement category. An ISO move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item, new business, is BOC dash one-three dash one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero-three-nine for approval of memoriam agreement for the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board?
I do.
Vice President Veighy.
This concludes a series of votes that will commit and obligate the remainder of our ARPA funds. I can't tell you how excited I am to serve in a board that prioritizes our parks and recreation, which the vast majority of these funds are going to support. We're going to remediate decades of underinvestment in our parks and make them a bright shining star in our region. So, I'm really proud to serve with all of you and to share this priority and to get this important work done. So, thank you.
Well, kudos to you, Matt, and the team that you put together in the community to come forward with the recommendations that we're following. I know that was a lot of work, and I'm glad that we can see this through.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the new business for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Veighy will now turn to matters of the Finance Committee and Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Hecker. First item, FC zero-one's one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to approve the September two thousand and twenty-four expenditures in the amount of three million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred one dollars, twelve cents, and salaries and wages in the amount of two million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars, seventy cents, and authorizing the proper officials to sign it and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of December two thousand and twenty-four. An ISO move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Yes.
Rothman.
De Placido.
Yes.
Laney Martin.
Brown.
Yes.
Weinberg.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Depome.
Yes.
Young Gertz.
Yes.
Spiegelman.
Yes.
Bowles.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Vice President Veighy.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Last item, FC zero-two one-one-one-four-two-four. Motion to consider continuing with United Healthcare as the retiree medical plan provider effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five. An ISO move.
It's been moved and seconded. Just a quick question. So, the motion says to consider continuing with United Healthcare. Are we voting to continue with United Healthcare? And should we amend the language to make that clear?
The motion is phrased a little oddly, but my understanding is the motion is a vote to continue with United Healthcare, so I would suggest amending the motion.
Okay. You want to amend that, Commissioner Weinberg? This is a motion to continue with United Healthcare, not to consider.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll amend the motion to continue with United Healthcare as the retiree medical plan provider effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the items of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. And with that, we will open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. Please come forward. State your name. You have three minutes.
Hi. Karen McGarry Rosen, the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Council, and I just-
We've met once or twice.
Sorry?
I said, "We've met once or twice."
We have.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to point out, one of the Commissioners, Dr. -- oh, doctor, excuse me. Commissioner De Placido pointed out to me on our presentation last month that we had an incorrect value on our graph. So, it was on slide fifteen, and it was related to the businesses. Would you support an ordinance prohibiting a business prohibiting a business from providing single-use plastic to customers? And the percent, the correct percentages were sixty-three percent, yes, nineteen percent, ambivalent, and twen-- excuse me, eighteen percent, no. So, it was a higher percentage in our presentation, which of course is in the recorded version. We have revised that version before we posted it on our website, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And anybody else who happened to look at the -- we didn't get any comments in our email that, you know, we had wrong percentages, but I appreciate Doc -- uh, Doctor. Commissioner De Placido.
He's an honorary doctor. I mean, spotting that-
Bringing it to my attention.
We'll give him an honorary doctorate in statistics.
I just play one on TV.
There you go.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? Please do so.
Adele Cubell, Abington. Mr. Hecker, instead of investing effort into intimidating me, why don't you do the right thing? For over four years, I have worked to get dumpsters closed on a less than three-mile stretch of Old York Road. Mr. Hecker, why do you insist that families live with open dumpsters nearby? Why are we allowing Mr. Manfredi and Rudolph and Clark to not hold businesses accountable for open dumpsters? Get the Smile Center, Lug Oil on Moreland, Car Wash to close their dumpsters. Target has a wide-open dumpster that is missing a lid and is never closed, going on months. Rudolph and Clark must have the ability to get dumpster lids closed. Otherwise, we need a different group to be our solicitor. Yards of broken sidewalks and curbing on Old York Road need repairs. This administration should be ashamed that I have reported the same businesses and apartments for almost four years. Rudolph and Clark is not holding the Marquis family accountable for destroyed curbs and sidewalks around the Crafty Crab. Reported it for years. Fred Beans needs to repair the curbing area by Old York and Hart. Been reported over and over, property changed hands. It must be fixed. Fifteen eighty-two Edge Hill Apartments has yards of destroyed concrete, very dangerous, by a bus stop. Reported it for four years, almost. The township wanted judgment. The fifteen-hundred area is dangerous. This administration has created slum conditions here. Township videos document the Dr. Seuss-style no-answer responses that Mr. Manfredi and Mr. Hecker rely on. Four years, almost. Get the dumpster that brings rats closed. Clean the street properly. Instead of insulting me, hold the businesses responsible for repairing sidewalks. Not one Commissioner would support replacing long-broken benches, broken in pieces. Numerous decade-old benches need to be replaced. Why does the administration refuse to spend any money on citizens? It's our tax money. Abington has high taxes and neglect everywhere. Old York drivers crash into light poles regularly. Mr. Manfredi practices the philosophy, "Why replace light poles? They're going to get hit again." Sidewalk light poles being hit indicates pedestrians need protection. The after-school car crash that left a young girl injured should be a wake-up call. Stop utilizing your positions to benefit developers. Safety concerns are ignored. Developers profiting controls every decision and everything here. Commissioners prioritize a system for charging parking fees. Meanwhile, sidewalk car crashes are brushed aside by Commissioners. Your priorities demonstrate no concern for people. Abington can't have positive economic development with slum businesses. The new Wawa spreads trash directly into the creek. This is an impact on the water that we drink.
Please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
But it's being done to hold the Maytag, Laundromat accountable. It is a disgrace. It's a disgrace. Mr. Bowman feels it's a wonderful place to go, beautiful place.
Thank you for your comments.
Get the sidewalks fixed. Decades-old driveway needs to be fixed.
Ms. Cubell, your time has expired. Please take your seat. Thank you for your comments.
Tell the hospital to fix this.
Please take your seat.
Abington Hospital, you -- they own you.
Yeah. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? And if not, we will turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman?
Laura Lehman, Nada Brook. So, we have, I mean, we have a problem. A new Township Manager is a very important part of what's happening in Abington. And when the public is completely cut out of the process, that is not acceptable. So, the thing I want to talk about most tonight is the mess that's happening in the zoning department. So, there's no way that twelve-oh-nine Riddle Road ever should have been presented. So, what a shame that so many people lost so many time, so much time, and put so many dollars out of their pockets towards consulting attorneys and research and everything else. It's just nonsense. It never should have seen the light of day on any agenda because it didn't meet any of the MPC rules. And we have a zoning officer who is supposed to be taking care of that and not put the -- first of all, the applications are never complete. The hardships are not properly listed. And so, that hardship that the property would have met the character of the neighborhood was, obviously, should have had a note from that zoning officer that he doesn't believe that it meets that. So, okay, if they're allowed to submit anyhow, but they shouldn't submit without the zoning officer having written something that says he doesn't believe it meets that. And he's required at a zoning hearing board meeting to advocate for the residents of the township for things that do not meet the law. And the same thing with the Taco Bell that just happened. What a shame, the number of hours people had to spend and their time and money out of their pockets because we allowed something that wasn't appropriate to get on an agenda. The document wasn't even complete and should have been returned to the applicant. And if it were complete, it should have come with a letter from the zoning officer that said that it doesn't meet the MPC. So, it's clearly the fault of the applicant that it doesn't fit, that the project doesn't fit. So, he didn't find out about the property later on. He bought the property knowing it. And in fact, he probably only had a partial equity position, and that document wasn't in there. So, that application wasn't complete for that reason as well. So, we have to fix this.
All right. Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Please require that the zoning officer attend the meetings in person, that he provide- Please require that the zoning officer attend the meetings in person, that he provide a letter whether the things that meet or don't meet the code, and that he also actually fix a form that properly shows, here's the thing I'm asking, here's the hardship for that.
Thank you for your comments.
Ross Abel?
Hi, Ross Abel on Washington Lane with Jinket Town, Abington Neighbors Association and Bike Montgomery County. First off, wanted to congratulate our new Township Manager. Looking forward to working with you as a resident and from our organization. Second, I wanted to give a shout out to the Township and Stuart and Township Engineering and Public Works for the great work on Abington-Jinket Town Connections Project. We get to use the new sidewalks and paths daily, and we're super enjoying it. Myself and a lot of the neighbors would love to see the Township really lean into it and make the rest of this corridor safe. The sidewalks are great, but we still have cars going very fast and long distances without stop signs, so we would love to see you get more proactive, and we'd love to partner with you and figure out what else we can do to make it feel safer and usable for our families and our kids. Next, I wanted to encourage the Township to consider how we could do a multi-municipal study around 611. You heard some of the other commentators noting things like sidewalks and problems with York Road. We've had a lot of deaths, a lot of crashes on 611, and this is not just a problem for our Township, it's also a problem for Jinket Town and Sheltonham. And I would love to see us partner with Monco and conduct a study looking at traffic coming on 611 to make it a corridor that really unites both sides of the street and draws people in together into a usable space that's not just run by cars and that feels dangerous for us to cross. But other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. Appreciate your comments. I believe Mr. McInnany wanted to make a comment, Tara? Okay, Tom, please come forward.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Can you -- good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to respond to one of the previous speaker's continued smears against our zoning officer who works on his supervisor in the fire and code and zoning department. While I appreciate her vigor in trying to defend the zoning of the Township, her attacks are completely misguided and show a fundamental misunderstanding of the procedure of taking things to the zoning hearing board. Our zoning officer's job in that process is merely to process the applications. The zoning hearing board is the finder of fact in those situations, and they're there to hear the case and to determine if there is a hardship or if there is a need for avariance. The continued attacks against our zoning officer is offensive to me and to my department and to Mr. Van Horn, and they're completely misguided, and I just wanted to go on record and set the record straight. And I appreciate the time that you've given me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McInnany. And also, just to clarify, not everyone might know, I know you know Commissioner Youngerz, but the applicant has withdrawn the application for the Taco Bell and Old York Road, so that is not moving forward and will not be appearing before the zoning hearing board this coming week. I don't know what they're going to do with that property ultimately, but it will not be the Taco Bell that they originally envisioned. Okay, and before we adjourn, just a shout out to Chief Malloy, who is already in game gear. Chief Malloy, what jersey do you have on this evening?
Kelsey. And it's a subtle reminder to keep the agenda moving, President.
Thank you for the important reminder, Chief Malloy. With that, we are adjourned, and we will transition right to the working session. Thank you.